The flurries were starting as I was coming down the hill.
Yeah, I know it's that.
It was like, oh boy.
The road looked wet.
Well, I'm farther north and so.
Oh, no, 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 no. The road looked wet and so it was like, oh, is it frozen yet? Is it?
That one Franklin or the Dorchester turn right after Franklin always makes me so nervous.
I know.
It's so easy to, because we have to jet out from Franklin.
But there's always black ice.
On that corner.
Situation because of the hemlocks and all it's facing.
Yeah.
I was wondering maybe they had sprayed it with maglori or something.
I don't, do we do that?
No, I don't think Scotty does that anymore.
Is that just, is that the Anover stuff?
Anover.
Yeah, there's some downsides to that stuff too. It eats your cars very quickly. So, yeah, the, not a good.
Not great for the undercoat.
No. It has just a nice fine covering of the salt.
All right, but my phone is.
Recording in progress.
I'll call the meeting to order. First order of business, let's introduce ourselves.
I'm Dave Robbins, planning and zoning administrator.
Phil Malcolm, vice chair, chair of the meeting in the chair's absence tonight.
Will Washburn?
Yeah.
Chidi Tunchula, Adair Molligan, recorder.
All right, and the second order of business, would you accept an appointment to be a full member tonight?
I'd be, yes.
Okay, thank you, all right. We have a three-member board, which is the minimum per quorum. I believe that the applicant has agreed to this.
Yep, I've talked to.
All right, all right, so that's good. We can go forward then with the meeting, okay. So the next order of business is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on November 17th. What is your pleasure?
I move, will you approve the minutes? I second.
Second, all right. Any discussion, amendments, ready for a vote? All right, all in favor of accepting minutes is permitted. All right, all right, up, thank you there. Or this was David, right?
Yes, I think they were mine.
Yes, thank you, David. All right.
No.
No, no, they were there, yep. Nope, I double-checked.
Am I right?
They somewhere along the last couple of months.
Yes, okay, all right. So the only order of, only business we have other than that tonight is an applicant on behalf of Terry Baxter by John Officer, special exception under section 464B to construct a resident and accessory structures within the agricultural soils district on a property at Penn Spring Hill Lane, map 201 lot 123. So is there someone that would like to step forward and explain to us what you're proposing to do?
Yeah, so the lots just here, all the way here. Sit down.
Sure, you can sit down. You can stand up.
I'll sit. Little lot, just around the corner here. Terry and Terry Baxter are the owners and we intend to purchase the lot from them and put up a single-family dwelling. No intention to impede on any of the side or rear or, you know, front yard setbacks. But we do understand that it's mostly, I think there's a very small, David showed me on the map, amount of the lot that is not in agricultural soils, all the way at the back, like a very small thumbnail. The rest of it is, and so obviously we need an exception to be able to build.
David, your calculations show there's two acres in this lot that are not in the egg soil, is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's, the map that I provided does show at the very back of the lot, there's a little tiny area.
All right. Well, let's turn ourselves, do you have anything else you want to share with us?
No, that's it, I have a, had a separate designer come out just to be certain that, and he actually dropped off his design today that will ultimately go to the state should this be approved and should, you know, the town sign it. But, yeah, there's, passed a per test in the area where we would propose building, so everything seems to be okay should this be approved.
All right.
I'm happy to share that if you'd like to see it.
No, I think we're okay with that. Let's, I think the first thing we have to do is we get past the, the place you want to build in the egg soil district. So we need to take that first.
Yeah.
And we won't review the application for the septic tank unless it falls within one of our zones that we need to review that.
Right, if it is built within that 1.5 acres, Lord, which isn't the intent, then that would, you know, the special exception would cover that.
Yes, as long as it's approved by the state.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I wish, I think, so are you ready to go into deliberation on this? Or do you have any more questions for the applicant?
You do have, John here is a member of the public, I don't know if you want to.
Oh, yes, John, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, John Bigelow. I'm not in a butter, but I do have well water that's deeded on this property, on the lot, that's going to be built on.
And does that show on any of the plans or maps that we have?
I don't know if it shows on your maps. I wasn't notified about the meeting and I had to find out about it through just fortunate word of mouth.
So which lot are you on this, on this map here, John? Could you point to that for us so we?
What, my home is on?
Well, where your.
Well, the well water, the well water's on 201 123.
Can you show us on the map where it is?
Yeah.
Or then we can circulate, just make a mark on the map where you think it is.
John, so do you have access to, to drill a well or there's already a drill there?
Ray Clark put it in, I'm not sure the exact.
Gotcha, so it's a drill.
It's behind this property and it's right there in, put down in there, so.
All right, so right at the end of your figuring out, what about there?
Yep, and there's another well further north, further east that Don Pulaski is concerned about and also the abutter.
All right, can you show?
Priscilla.
Can you mark where that is?
It's approximately right.
Do you use the pin?
It's approximately, he just showed me yesterday, it's approximately right there.
Okay, all right, I'll circulate this.
Thanks.
All right, so before we go into deliberation, I have one question. And one of the, one of the things that we have to determine is why you can't build outside the zone, the conservation district. I mean, you have to show that that's something that you can't do. You can read that section of the ordinance if you wish before you answer the question, but.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I'm aware of the, that section of the ordinance. The, the map, I don't have access to the map, I think David did. It was a very small section at the very back, which would require, here we go, which would require disturbing what I would see as significantly larger area of this parcel of land to try to access that section.
Did you see this?
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, that's okay, and this is also quite a steep slope.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think that would require probably a further exception for building on steep slope, but.
All right, well, somehow we're going to have to make sure that question gets addressed tonight. There is, according to the calculation, there's two acres back there. Is that, do I read those calculations?
1.5, right, first.
5.8 versus 7.8, right?
Are we talking about the 25%? I thought it was.
No, we're talking about the total amount of the lot.
Oh, that's outside of, gotcha.
And that the conservation district is 5.8 out of 7.8. Do I read your calculations?
Let me just, I want to double check to make sure I'm.
Yep, that's all right. We all want to make sure.
And let me just make sure I, oops, every once in a while I grab the wrong number off my sheet. Yep, so that is, those are numbers of what I calculated, so yes, there's.
Two acres.
Yeah, but that seems awful large for that.
Yeah. So the entire parcel is 7.68?
Yeah.
Well, it says 7.8 on that.
Okay, so there's also showing where the agricultural soils is, there's also some wetlands and some steep slopes that, and I think the wetlands are in overlap that I didn't show. So the wetlands take up a portion of that two odd acres.
Is it be out in the back here or is it, let's see, I don't know which director, it's all going to be.
Let me just.
Is it springy?
Well, I don't have them shown on the maps. I'm not sure where, so if you hold on just a second, I can.
Okay.
Our water level is fairly slow over here.
This is the stream line. This is the stream. But this is the stream.
So again, sit down. So if you look.
Yep, make sure the other four members.
Right here, there is a small area of wetlands.
Yes.
And then at the backside of the lot, there is some steep slopes and those happen to overlap the, the egg soil. So when I did the calculations, I only calculated the egg soils that were not covered by the wetlands and the steep slopes. I don't double count.
I see, yeah.
So.
So if you, if you were to highlight on a map, the, the conservation for egg soil and the steep slope and the wetlands, what's left?
Absolutely nothing.
Okay, all right. I think we need that to get that into the record because we're only approving this, we're only being asked to approve this under egg soil conservation and there's nothing in the application that talks about the limitations on the site with, in terms of steep slope and wetlands. And to Mr. Bigelow's comment about protecting the well, which if you were to build in the non-egg soil, you'd be someplace closer to the well.
Yes, you would.
I thought the proposed building site was, am I not looking at this correctly? I thought the proposed building site was over in here and the two wells are down here.
It's right along the road.
It's right along here?
It's going to be right.
Like basically where you enter.
You can kind of see the, the area that's cleared.
Gotcha, yep.
Like with the non-wooden section, it would be kind of bright.
Well, then that's.
At the back edge of that.
Can I see where the wells are again?
They're way back here.
Yeah, they're way back there.
So we're talking about.
The back of the subject.
Over here.
Yeah.
When was the subdivision, by the way, David?
I don't know when it was, I know it was over 10 years ago.
Okay, all right, I guess that's the key thing.
Because I didn't do the subdivision and I've been here 13 years.
Yep.
Bill Lachlan.
What?
Isn't it Bill Lachlan?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so we're not, this is not the expansion of existing building or anything, this is all.
This is all new construction.
Yeah. Any members of the board have other questions for the applicant? Mr. Bigelow, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you. I thought I got two building sites from you, David, and one was down, downhill and one was uphill.
No, they're both the exact same place. The two maps that I sent you were the same ones, these are the two.
And is it down off the driveway, sort of downhill from the wells? Because if it's downhill.
Well, well, it won't matter, anything injected into the ground like a septic system isn't going to, it's not going to follow the terrain, it's going to.
There's only a foot, you only have to be a certain amount of feet away, there's no grade from my understanding. For some, you just have to be, I think, within what, you have to stay 75 feet away. Whether it's up or down or anything, you just stop.
And it's, once water goes into the ground, whatever the above terrain doesn't matter anymore. It's not going to follow.
But I think the way the grade is from spring, I think, I think the house site will still be above, if I'm not.
Yes, it will be above.
Right, it'll still be above where the drilled, well, the drilled wells are, but not, but the stream is actually dividing.
Yeah, the stream is going to be on, or the, the water.
Yeah.
Not really a stream.
Are these drilled wells done or are they dug wells?
One, the one Ray Clark put in is a pipe, a cement pipe that goes down maybe five or six feet into the riverbed. And it pumps from the bottom of that. The other well that Don Pulaski showed me, which is Priscilla, Priscilla is the abutter. Her well is in the woods and it's protected by a lean too. So I think that's a surface well too, not drilled, super deep.
All right. All right, David, do you know if these wells are registered with the state?
I don't believe they are.
How are we going to make sure that they are protected when we review, when the state reviews the septic tank?
Well, the, the septic design, when the state reviews it, they're, the, it is on the septic designers to ensure that there are no wells within the 75 feet. So the, the septic designer is going to go out beyond their design and look for any type of things.
All right.
And then.
But he may or may not find them depending on how diligent.
Sorry, I'm going to cut you off, but I did walk the lot with a septic designer and we did find all three wells that you referenced and we wouldn't be.
Okay, all right.
Within 75 or even 150 feet, I think, if any.
So they're not currently deeded, are they deeded though?
Yes, they're deeded.
They're deeded, okay, perfect, okay.
Do I need to register them somehow?
The register is when you have a drilled well, the well driller actually provides information to the state, basically who drilled it, when they drilled it, what the recovery rate is.
Okay.
That type of information.
Okay.
I think your, your main concern to be checked off on, which it sounds like it is, is that it will carry over when officers purchase it, it will be carried over in the next date.
Yes.
So it'll, it'll acknowledge that you have the well rights and your, and the other neighbor will have the well rights.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think also because the special exception requires a zoning easement be placed on the property prohibiting development on the remainder of the egg soils, that those wells are within those egg soils. So that's going to provide even more protection than you have now.
Okay.
Because nobody can, will be able to, to build on those.
Okay.
Or near those.
We will make it a, a condition of the special exception that the, that the zoning administrator, when he issues the building permit, confirms that the septic design honors the location of these wells specifically in the design, not, not just hearsay, but measurements and all the rest.
Thank you. Oh, you mean locations?
Yeah.
Oh, great, thank you.
That will be a, I'm sure we'll make that as a requirement of the approval of the building permit when we get, when David gets the septic tank design approval presumably from the state, that if, we will make it a condition that approving the building permit will indicate that the septic design honors the location of what we know here are three wells, not just two.
Yeah, I didn't know about third well.
It's, yeah, it's like an open, totally open, it's kind of creepy.
Thank you.
All right, so, okay, all right, so, David, do you have anything else you want the board to be aware of?
Not that I'm, I can think of.
Okay, all right. As a procedural matter, we now vote ourselves into deliberation where we talk among the three of us. If you have anything that we talked about that you want us to stop by deliberation and hear you comment to signify that, and we'll do so. Otherwise, the only other person in the room, the only other two people in the room who can comment while we're talking in deliberation is the recorder, Adair, and David, the zoning administrator. They don't have a vote in whatever we do, but they have the right to make sure they either understand what we're doing or make sure we're not, you know, going someplace we don't need to go. Okay, all right, so we have a motion to move to deliberation?
No motion to deliberation, it's all right.
Second.
Second, all right, thank you. Okay, so what is your pleasure, Dave? Do either of you have something in mind that you want to go forward with or do you want to talk about it some more?
Maybe talk about it a little bit.
Okay, let's talk about it a little bit then. Go ahead. So what are your thoughts on this?
I mean, I don't, I think it fits all of the criteria that Dave has in terms of having that percentage necessary outside of the agriculture. And given the wetlands and the steep, steep slope, you have to fall within that same area. We don't have to double count it. The septic seems like it's in a perfect spot. The building design is within the setbacks of all abutting properties. The two.
Or it's not within setbacks.
Sorry, sorry, within setback restrictions.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, or outside of the restrictions. The two, I guess, three.
Go slow enough so Adair gets all of it.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
No, that's okay, because this is going to be.
I didn't know this was formal, okay.
Yeah, right, I mean, this will be, you know, the part of the motion.
Perfect.
Yep.
And then we've now learned about the two wells, but it sounds like a third exists as well. And we will be including those to be carried into the requirements for the septic design when it gets to that point.
The abutters have not.
The abutters, yeah, the abutters have not complained, have not had any concerns. Yeah, I don't think I missed.
Well, okay, I, I think we should specifically address number A, excuse me, 464B, where it says the development of any of the listed below, which is 1 through 11, shall not occur within the district unless the lot does not have sufficient developable non-agricultural soil to accommodate a proposed use.
Yeah.
What, what that doesn't also talk about is that if some of the rest of the lot is subject to other, potentially other conservation districts like wetlands and/or steep slope. So that was, I mean, I think we just need to acknowledge that when we talk about the development, sufficient developable non-agricultural soil, we have to indicate that there aren't any. So it is part of our, the, the motion to approve this, I think, so if we could add that to, to our findings.
Yeah.
And any other thoughts before we move to a motion or any of the clarifications we want to have in the, in the minutes?
Did I? And I'm sorry, John, I thought I saw somewhere, this is just a single family, right? With no auxiliary, like no.
You ready to make a formal motion with these findings?
I am, I don't know if I've got your, the last one you just said though. So can you repeat that one just in terms of?
Right, that, that even though the ordinance only mentioned, it talks about sufficient developable non-agricultural soil as the way in which you can, you have to demonstrate that there's no additional development soil, ground outside the egg soil, otherwise we would say to the applicant.
Go find that.
Go find, go put it on the two acres that's out back or wherever it might be.
Perfect, okay.
But that turns out not to, to be subject to other conservation zones, if I understood David correctly.
That's correct.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve this special exception based on, and I just go through and repeat.
I think you could say the findings that we've just.
Based on the findings that we've just discussed.
Yep, we can ask the recorder to incorporate those in the, in the motion.
Recorder, could you please incorporate? Thank you.
No, I think that's, that's, that's purely, totally with, okay, good. All right. All right, so we have, the other piece that we need to do with special exceptions, if you remember, is section 10, whatever, 10.
Forty.
Yeah, 1040, okay, so let's just quickly move to 1040 so we can talk about this. Now, we can either go through A, 1 through 14, one by one, or we can read them silently if you wish and make a motion that it meets the conditions of A, 1 through 14, where applicable. And then we can move to B, where we can cite the, the restrictions or limitations that we wish to impose. So whichever way you would like to proceed, if you'd like to read 1 through 14 and talk about each one if it's applicable, we can do that. And then we'll have in the minutes what our discussion is on 1 through 14. So if you think that, should we do that?
Yeah, let's just.
Okay, all right, good, okay. So under A1, will be in harmony with the purposes and intent of the ordinance. I think we're in agreement, there it is. Two, will be in harmony with general protocol and objective standards of the master plan. We've all read the master plan, are very familiar with it. Okay, good. The site is appropriate location due to its other factors. And the conservation permission, we didn't ask for their input because it didn't directly impact any conservation districts other than the egg district. Compatible neighboring development of space, I mean, this is a subdivision area. They're relatively, relative to other parts of line, there's small lots, even though they're five, six, seven acres or less, something like that, so that seems okay. Number five, this is not adversely affect the character of the neighborhood. I think this is a neighborhood of small lot development. Design, construction, operating, maintain, will be harmonious in property appearance. We don't have any testimony about the, actually what the construction is, but I think this is in a remote section of town. Let's see if the.
Oh, that's the septic.
Do we have any other input you wanted to come back?
No, I'm just, I wanted to double check the, since you had the septic plans. In many cases, septic designers put a note saying that they have not found any type of wells or they even put cemeteries, burial grounds, you know, in the note. I just, just checking to see if that actually was done on this plan or not. But it is not, so. It's something that.
That we're going to include.
Right, for your request to have that.
Add it to the.
Add it to the plan, what I would, wanted to check with the board is, is it sufficient for you to have it noted that the septic designer has checked and there are no wells within the protective radius of the system?
I think it better be on the plan.
So, because, and the reason I'm asking is because the plan does not go.
That's right here, yeah.
Look, there's one, oh, there is a well right there.
Yeah. I, I would prefer that the, that the plan submitted, make that, make that assertion.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're, we've not made a site visit, we're not going to go out there.
So if we have them amend the plan by putting in an inset.
Just on the ledger or like in the corner or something.
Yeah, well, the purpose, you know, trying to show the plan that the state is going to want to see. If they put in an inset to show the. Well, the, the premise, you know, trying to show the plan that the state is going to want to see, if they put in an inset that show the, the lot and then the location of the, those wells within the lot and the approximate location of the, the system within that inset.
Whatever you would be satisfied with, we'll, we'll accept your, what your recommendation, when we get to that, you're better.
Okay, that's perfect.
So number seven, it's a single family home, it doesn't sound as though it's any hazardous, but everything is made as a whole. Eight, it is not, well, activity, materials and so forth, that seems like it's not applicable. Number nine, this will have vehicular pros and cons, okay, so we're talking about, is this a public room, by the way?
Uh, no, it's private.
Private, okay, all right, so we don't need to worry about that. 10. We don't have any direct testimony, number 10, about loss of construction of wildlife and so forth, but I would assume that this is going to be only developing on less than two acres.
Right.
We don't need to worry about that. We don't have any testimony about adverse or undue burden on public improvement facilities, utilities and so forth. But I, it's a single family home, I don't know how we would differentiate that. Number 12, planning board, we did not require, this approval does not require planning board review. Number 13, this is no changes, this is a single family neighborhood. And 14, this is all gonna be offsite parking. All right, so can we acknowledge that we've, we've reviewed section A, 1 through 14 and concluded that the applicant meets the conditions where applicable under 114, 1 through 14. And then for B, we're allowed to impose additional limitations or restrictions, so let's, let's take those up. The principal concern that's been expressed by the public is that there are existing wells on the property, that we need to make sure that the septic design acknowledges those explicitly. Would you be okay if we give that responsibility to David pursuant to issuing the building permit that he has to be satisfied that the design acknowledges and incorporates those well locations?
Yeah, and, and as I said, what I'll do is I will have the, the septic, or I'll have you ask the septic designer to just do an inset, show us the entire parcel, they, they can take the parcel from the tax map and locate the wells, locate the septic system and show the scale so that we know that it's.
And that's what will ultimately go to the state as the, as the final application?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any other?
I just want to double check, make sure you're happy with the protections.
So any, any other conditions, we, I mean, we have up to nine different types of conditions we can impose, so. The, the ordinance itself imposes for our number, number nine, for example, an easement or building envelopes to limit or prohibit further development. This will use, if I understand, 100% of the 25% of the.
Yes.
So.
Can we impose, just that it needs to say can't deviate, since we don't have building plans quite yet, that it won't deviate outside of the envelope?
We have the envelope.
Right.
That, that they're gonna build in, so if they have to, if they go out, if they ultimately decide they need to be outside that envelope that's on the plan submitted, then they have to come back and ask for an exception to the exception. So, so we, we will require the arithmetic that's in your review of the application be part of the, the approval that, that the plan submitted indicates the building envelope and that uses 100% of the 25% of the, of a special exception allowed for agricultural soils. Any other, we, we normally use some language like best practices and that, but I, we don't have any specific proposal yet, so I'm not sure.
Might I suggest that you, you put in best practices for erosion control because, during construction, because there is a drainage way that comes down and feeds your pond, and so putting in erosion control during construction will protect that.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, good, are we okay to add that one to the, to the conditions? Anything else that you think of David we need to incorporate?
No, I think that's everything.
Okay, all right, so you are with this?
Yeah, the second part?
Well, right, so now we have a motion and we need a second?
A second.
Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good, all right, so you have, no, we need to enter deliberation before we can.
I'm going to go out of deliberation. My second.
Okay, all in favor, good, okay, thanks. All right, so the public can appeal our decision for 30 days. So if you proceed with any of this before that 30 days is up, you do so with the risk that you might, there, there might be a challenge to our decision. So I just alert you to that.
Understood, and that is not my intent.
No, no, I mean, you're totally, you're on your own from now on, right? If you do that, you do so because, Mr. Bigelow, for example, might wake up tomorrow morning and go, geez, you know what? And then he'd be back here telling David I have a problem and now, so, okay, so you have 30 days, which in, anybody who has standing can appeal our decision. And then we have to take it up and go forward, okay, all right, so other than that, I think.
And I think with you, on the easement language, we have a template, we just need to kind of figure out the area that's.
Yeah, right, right, we would, yes, we should have thought of that, we would need to meet some bounds on that building envelope.
We'll get that taken care of.
Okay, all right, all right, any other business tonight? Do we have? All right, good.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, good luck, thank you.
Thank you, especially.
Yeah, no problem.